Stand for the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming, everybody. It's kind of like one of those days where we're waiting for spring to spring. And next week, the week from today, is it? No, Monday, is the solar eclipse.
Solar eclipse, yeah.
And if I remember right, I read it's going to start here around 2:00 and go to about 4:00. So don't stare at the sun, Mark.
Don't have to worry about that.
Unless you get your cardboard lenses. So, all right, roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Arty Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Okay, looks like we're all here in a comment for. First thing is a public hearing on our Harson's Island Nature Park. This is a requirement I submitted for a grant of, with our match and everything, it would be a $500,000 grant. And to do this job, and one thing we got to do is have a public hearing. And just to let everybody know where it is, it's on Harson's Island and Columbine, just this side of the school, the, um, the, yeah, the schoolhouse grill. It's nine acres. And it entails a dock going out into the Crispin drain. It's all handicap accessible. And it will have a handicap kayak launch out there. And included will be a couple of spots where, you know, people could fish. And there will be a platform for bird watching. And to score more points, I made a trailhead for, a bike trailhead, it will be a bike rack and a few amenities. There'll eventually, there'll be a bathroom that will support it. And eventually, there'll be a little walking trail around the, kind of the perimeter of the, of the nine acres. And included, I put, basically, we sent from Eagle, Pressure Control did, and we got the permit. And so, like I said, I, I applied for, um...
Shouldn't we open the public hearing?
What, sir? Yeah, I'm sorry, I should. Been ahead of myself.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the Harson's Island Nature Park at 6:03 PM.
Okay, motion, support, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, now we'll open up.
Sorry.
So now, I'll backtrack. So this is what, what we're doing. And I'm hopeful we'll get the, I, I applied for a DNR development grant, which will pay for 80% of it. And the, it's, it's, this will score well. So I, I'm pretty hopeful we're going to get the grant to do this. I won't know probably till, I'll have a good idea in August, we'll get our preliminary score, and then it would be awarded in November for the actual grant. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or like to comment, but not that's okay, too.
It'll cost us $100,000 and they pay the $400, as part of the plan.
Yep. And we did get preliminaries. We were going to split it up in two phases, but really with everything, it's going to be close to $500,000. So we just go and do it. So that's what it is. I think next meeting, I'll, I'll put some nicer copies, we'll stick them on the wall so people can see it, so.
What kind of consideration was given to the, the proposed parking? What is it, like 14 spaces, or is that just an initial proposal?
Yeah, that's what, what we kind of determined, it would support it. I don't think they, they would give us much more. Because we were, yeah, they, I mean, that must have stretched and getting this, that much. And it's, most of it's going to have to be aggregate, except for where the handicaps are, that would be paved. They don't, Eagle doesn't like the paved parking lots so much, so, and...
So most of it will be, okay, like ag?
Right.
With a sub base?
Mm-hmm.
ADA accessible handicap to the right and...
Yep.
Or top and bottom of the platform or, or walk?
Yep.
And then are we still considering a, a means to get kayaks down to the...
Well, it's going to be eight foot wide thing. What I would probably do is take a couple of those, they have these dollies to, to, I mean, people usually will carry their kayaks, but we'd probably put a couple dollies on there, they can put them on there and wheel them out, wheel them back, at least try it.
How many feet is it from the, from the platform?
Oh, I would have to look.
To the launch?
I think it is about 550. And there's, all, actually, there's probably going to be a spot you can, you can launch it other than the end, too. So you could dump it, yeah, you could dump it in the water before that.
Be another nice case for the potential marsh master.
Yep.
Keep that opened up so the Crispin doesn't...
Oh, yeah.
So people, you know, you invite the usage.
Not to get on a tangent, but, you know, we'll be able to use that on all our drains, county drains. So anyhow, so is there any, if I don't hear any more comments, public comments, board member comments? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:07 PM.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, sing the first thing and I. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next we have bills payable. I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $47,496.58.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion?
I just had a question about the annual audit of $6,500. That was our entire cost for our annual audit?
No.
No, we did a $30,000 down payment prior to them starting the audit. That was the balance.
That looked pretty, pretty inexpensive.
Yeah, not that, it's cheap, but it's not that cheap.
Okay, so it was more like $36,000. Okay.
Yeah, and then there was a lot of add-ons, too. But...
Okay.
Yep. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Arty Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have our Thrilling Supervisors Report. And as we mentioned, we've, I've been doing a lot of asking for money in the past month with grants. We have asked a total of about $400,000 from the county. They're, they're going to actually address, from their art for funds, they're going to be addressing some of that Thursday meeting, I'm going to go up there for that meeting. But it's, they're concentrating mostly on public safety and parks and rec items. Got to ask from the state of Michigan for a marsh master for $2.25 million to help us cut frags. I'm getting good, good response to that so far. And we also have a line item, an MDOT, for additional $2 million to pave M154 with asphalt. They were going to do just a chip seal, and I, um, I objected, objected to it strongly. And Senator Hertel's actually putting in a line item for $2 million for, to upgrade that to asphalt, additional $2 million. I had the DNR trust fund grant for the 400 for that, and then another passport DNR grant to help with the exercise equipment for our park next door, outdoor exercise equipment. We're doing, or we did a FEMA grant for fire department radios for $283,000. And we have a federal earmark for our Harson's Island wastewater treatment plant, the LG plant, which they were kind of all from Stabinow, Peters, Gary Peters office, and Lisa McLean's are all, you know, come on, Arty, give us, give us, so, I actually bumped it up a little bit to two, two and a quarter, two point, or $2,250,000. And I've gotten great, great feedback from that, too. So we're asking for a lot of money, which is great. And I feel pretty good about most of them. The passport grant, I, I did it for a favor to the county, I don't know, I, I kind of doubt that one will get funded. Only 30% of those get funded, so, but we asked. April 18th, Thursday, is the first time we've really done this, we're doing a state of the community address. And it's going to be at the Elginak Lions Hall, which is in Clay Township, 11:30 to 1:30, April 18th. And they have speakers from Elginak, Ira, and Clay that are going to be there. I heard Jeff Bohm's going to be there from the county, and I think Lisa McLean might be there. They're still trying to work that out. So if you're not doing anything, I think there is a charge, what is it?
Say they're $25 or $30, and tickets are available on the Anchor Bay Chamber website.
Yeah, Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce is putting this on. So there'll be a lot of good networking going on there, too.
Getting breakfast for that charge?
Uh, lunch, getting lunch.
Are you our speaker there?
Yeah, that's what they asked me to do. 11:30 to 1:30. We have our grant that we received, our Spark Grant for $584,000 for park upgrades, next door, new playground and equipment and stuff. The bids open April 4th, I believe at 10:00 AM, I have to double check, I believe that's what it is. And then, once we get the bids open, we have to send them to the DNR, because it's DNR money, and they will approve one bid, and then it'll come back to our board at our next meeting for us to approve and award the bid for our, our playground stuff and get that going. So that will be fun. And I've actually, we fueled some, quite, quite a few questions, probably have two or three people bidding on it. We're applying for the Eagle permit for wetland mitigation for the Harson's Island Treatment Plant. We do kind of have a verbal agreement on what's going on with it, and as far as the mitigation for the wetlands, and getting ready, John, aren't we, to sending the, the permit to Eagle for actually doing the construction work and building the plant and so forth on that. And it's looking pretty good. We got a lot of the, oh, what do we call it, the pre, pre-bid permits with baselines where they want to see everything at it. So that's going very good, and that's going to start moving quick. And I wanted to mention, too, Clay Township now owns the property where the site's going. I closed on the property Friday. So it, it is our property now. And I didn't send back, we want to, want to bring back the, the water ordinance amendment and get that going and addressed. We were, we were going hot and strong on it, then we got busy and put it on the back burner, so I'm going to send what we have out on that. And any questions, please contact me on that. And we're finalizing our bid contracts for our sewer lining rehab project, and I sent around a show and tell with the liners like for that. That's actually out for bid right now. We've received questions from two or three companies already, and we're going to open that at the end of this month, those bids and award it in our first meeting in May, hopefully, to start that project. And let's see, I got, we have union negotiations starting in the next couple of weeks with MAFF. Just want to let the board know of that. And let's see, what else? Our marsh cleanup is May 11th, and the same day is our Clay Days, along with the American Union Powwow, it's in our, our park, May 11th, and that starts at noon at the city park. What time is the cleanup, Mike? Eight?
Uh, 9:00, or we start showing up at 8:00.
Yeah, between 8:00, 8:00, 9:00, down at the DNR access site on this end of St. John's Marsh, kind of across the street from the old Cheers Restaurant, I don't know what we call it now, so...
Walking path.
What's that?
Walking path.
Yeah, but a walking path, thank you. So that's off, May 11th, and show up, you get a tee shirt, right, Mike?
Yes, and fed.
And fed. Hot dogs for breakfast. So then our cleanup weekend is May 18th, and it's May 18th and 19th on Harson's Island, because they, we need an extra day to clean up over there. And the same weekend, our San Souci Block Party is May 18th, downtown San Souci, and that starts at 5:00 PM, closes the road down at 4:00 PM. And we got three really good bands with two stages, and that's a lot of fun. And I did want to mention, we have a couple of public notices about cutting your grass, our, our grass ordinance. Please cut your grass. Clay Township doesn't want to be in the grass cutting business, and you don't want us to cut our gra, cut your grass, because it's not cheap. And then we got another public notice for the cemetery to pick up all the grave, grave blankets and flowers, artificial decorations from the winter, because we're going to start, if not they're there, we're going to pull them out with our water department, so we can cut the grass around them. And that's all I have.
Can I ask about the property for the Harson's Island Treatment Plant?
Yeah.
Was that the one we looked at? What was the address on it?
Yeah, 130 Maple.
And I didn't know what we closed for, how much was it?
It was a whole dollar, and I paid it out of my pocket.
A dollar? Wow, okay.
So actually, technically, I own it.
[laughing].
Because I gave him a dollar.
All right, made it legal, thanks.
All right.
We'll give you an expense on it.
Yeah, okay.
Kristi will get that for you from petty cash.
Yeah, all right.
I'll have the file, I want you to fill out the report, sir.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. All right.
It's a deal.
Uh, let's see, public comments, now, do we have any public comments? Come on up, state your name and address.
I've done this before, only I was always complaining.
Really?
Okay, my name is Paula Burgess, and I represent Elginak Clay Historical Society. I live at 5909 Point Trumbull Road, Clay Township. And the reason I'm here today is we're very proud of our museum, and I think, I'd like to think that the majority of the people in Elginak do know that we do have a museum, but we would get very little foot traffic from Elginak and Clay Township people. So I really wish to take the day to come visit us, because we have a really big event coming up on Saturday, April the 13th. We have Roger, and I can't pronounce his last name, he's been here four times before, and he's always done a little story about the freighters. He's a gentleman that writes the book, Know Your Ships, and he's the author to it, he's, he does everything about it. He's the guy that took over after the gentleman that started it. And so he's going to be here, and he's, we're going to do a meet and greet, so you don't have to come and spend the day with us, you can just walk through the door, take a look at our museum, go visit with Roger. And then we have another lady, Kathleen Schmuck, and Kathleen works for the Canadian Freighters, and she's a cook, and she writes a cookbook about ship-to-shore cooking. She's also an author on children's books, and she was so excited when she found out Roger was coming here, because they're friends, she said, "Oh, my gosh, can I go along? I want to go down there, it's such a nice community, I'd like to go and see it." So let's show up and show them that we do have a lot of people that really like our museum and want to show off our community. So that one, it's, it's free, our museum is always free. If you have company from out of town and you think, "What are we going to do?", call us up, we'll open the museum and we'll give you a public tour, we'll just take you through, and we'll let you have as much time as you want. So we're very, very happy what's hap, what's happening there. However, we can always use help. So if there's anyone here that's retired or getting close to retired, you don't have to be retired, but I know it's hard to work and be a family and all of that. So anyways, the museum is free, there is a $5 donation, if you would like to buy something from either Roger or Kathleen, I'll give you a ticket, you drop $5 in my donation canister, and they'll deduct $5 off whatever you buy from them. So that's a pretty good deal, isn't it? They wanted to help us some way.
You have a really good store there, too.
Do I?
Yeah, store for buying Chris Craft memorabilia.
Oh, we do, we have a ship-to-shore store.
Swag store.
So, I mean, we really have some really nice quality, you know, a lot of Elginak stuff, Chris Craft stuff. I mean, I'd go on and on for hours about this, but I can't do that, I know. And I do have another event, this event always happens every year, before we actually open, and Bob Finn has always been very generous by doing a fish fry for us. And he is very generous when it comes to donating how much per dish that we serve that night. We also are going to have a gun raffle, and that gun raffle is a deck of cards, and the tickets are 20, the card is $20 apiece. So I hope to see some of yous, does anybody have any questions?
When's the fish fry?
The fish fry is next week, it's April the 10th, and in the same week, I don't know how I managed to pull that off, I have an event on Wednesday, and I have an event on Saturday. But we wanted to get, I want to get it started, I want to show this museum off, and so that when you guys have company, you can bring them someplace. You don't have to just go, "Well, I have to go on my boat again," you know? So the fish fry is, the fish fry is $20, and it doesn't, it's a cod dinner, and if you'd like a flyer, I have flyers, and on the back, it is the, all of our events for the entire year.
Awesome.
So we have a lot of things, we do a lot of things that don't cost you anything, it's just come and join us and have fun, okay?
So can you repeat the date again on your, your speakers?
Okay, with the speakers, it's the 13th.
Oh, 13th.
It's Saturday, April the 13th.
April the 13th, at what time?
It's, it opens, I'm sorry, I got so excited about what I was going to say.
That's okay.
Starts at 11:00, and they'll be there till 3:00, or until the crowd is gone. They said they stay as long as they... Yeah, they're very excited, I've talked to Roger so many times, and I would really say his last name, but, well, none of us can pronounce it, so...
Don't say the title of the book real fast, either.
No, I won't. Know Your Ships. It, it's really funny, because, you know, you look at this little book and you think, "Well, I already have that." They've been printing this book for years and years and years, but the information inside is a little different, and the cover is always different, so that's how you know.
And if you've never been, I, full disclosure, I'm a member of the museum, and they do a fantastic job in that museum, and it's just amazing, of all the, the stuff in there, and the, they have boats in there, and I, I could stay in there for hours every time I, I walked in there. I actually worked the museum across the street.
Yes.
One day.
The community.
I think it was like from 11:00 to 3:00, and I got looking at books and this and this, and I looked at my clock, holy cow, it was 5:00, I was open two hours longer, you know? It's, it's incredible.
Yeah, and when Arty was doing the memory boards or whatever.
Yeah, for Clay Days.
He was calling us like all the time, and he would go in there and he'd lug the books home, we'd let him take them home, but that's where a lot of that information came from.
All of it.
All of it, yeah. No, we, I mean, and we have the kids come and do research papers in there, if they had, Chris, we are the home of Chris Craft. If there's anyone sitting here and has ever heard of Chris Craft and didn't know that, Chris Smith started the Chris Craft Factory in Elginak, and it's known all over the world. It's a world, I mean, when we're the owners, I mean, we are the ones where it started. That's something that Elginak's working on.
Yes.
So, because we'd like to see that, we want to see scientists, "Welcome to the home of Chris Craft."
Yeah.
Paula, do you have days that the, the Historical Society is usually open?
They're all, they're open every Saturday and Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00, I think, it's not long, but if, we never close the door. If we have people in there, we are there for as long as people are there. Every time there's an event in Elginak, we are open normally from 10:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night. So if there's a car show, if there's a carnival, whatever, we are there when we're open. But, and we also own a log cabin over there, too.
Yep.
And that's a whole nother story, and I actually seen that as a child when they, when they uncovered it, and I'm like, "Oh, my goodness." But anyways, so that's it, I want to thank you very much.
What time's the dinner?
Fish fry, yeah.
The dinner? On 10th, April 10th?
Yes, that's on the 10th, and that is from 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
And you just come walking, and you don't have to buy a ticket in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll put some flyers in the back, and when you leave, if you'd like to take one, go ahead and help yourself.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Oh, I want to say thank you for your donation, too, Paula, from Clay Township, you guys have helped us put that new mansion on that roof.
Yeah. Thanks for everything you guys do.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments?
Judy Campbell, area 6052, St. Pierre in Clay. On March 17th, I sent to most of you the following email, "Request, please, as a resident of Clay, I'm requesting a few minutes of your time to listen to you and for you to listen to me regarding the issue of opting out of the county responding protocol for the fire department for the entire township. It is my understanding this issue must come to a vote this year, I think it is by June 21st. My schedule is very flexible and yours may be quite busy. Respectfully, Judy Campbell." I did not send to you, Mr. Bryson, because we have had several meetings, and you are in support by vote of the opt-out. Ms. Bory, I did not send to you for the same reason. Ms. Hiltonan, you responded immediately, and we did have a brief meeting, I felt you listened to me, and I hope you felt I listened to you. And while we agree to disagree, I learned things from that meeting, and I thank you. Mr. Oregan, you did respond, you were going out of the state, and you would reach me later in the week. I responded to you, and your auto-response said you would be back on the 25th, I have not yet heard from you. Mr. DeBoyer, I have not had a response from you to date. Mr. Burchard, you did respond, you'd get back to me later in the week, I have not heard from you again. Ms. Valentine, I apologize, I did something wrong when I sent the email, and it came back unable to deliver. I did resend this past week, and while I have not heard from you, I realize it is a holiday week.
I actually responded to you last week, Judy, if you want to check your email.
I will double-check.
Judy, I did not see your email, so I apologize on that, but I never saw an email from you.
Yours did not come back.
Could have gone, why don't you, why don't you resend it to, to the ones that didn't respond?
I can do that.
That would be fair, because they, they'll be looking for it then, too.
And, because my request still stands.
Right.
Excuse me, I'm not making, excuse me, I'm not making any excuses, but I came down with COVID, so that wiped everything out.
Oh, I wouldn't have wanted to see you, then. I have petitions being signed by Clay residents in support of the opt-out for the mainland. The guidelines for the petitions came from the assessor's office, as Clay itself does not have petition guidelines. The guidelines were, they had to be a resident, their name had to be on the property of the address they used, did not have to be a registered voter. Some of the signing, signers are waiting, as am I, to come to the voting meeting, and some indicate... Some of the signers are waiting, as am I, to come to the voting meeting and some indicated they may want to speak as public comment. I have spoken with the emergency dispatcher. She indicates that if asked, she would say the system is working in the sense that emergencies are being handled and there have been no major complaints. I may also have letters from some of our firemen who realize their job is to maintain the fire hall, trucks, and equipment, along with training, which they do. But it is not the bottom line as to why they became firemen and in the end, may negatively impact retention as they are not serving the community as they had hoped or were in the past. High turnover is a bottom-line cost. My recent discussion with a professional grant writer indicates less active call hours may negatively impact securing grants. Grants are what help us get some of the equipment that our fire company needs. I have met with Algonac's manager and mayor and I asked why they voted to opt-out for their residents. They said, one, they wanted their community to continue receiving the personal service they have come to expect from the firemen, many of whom they have come to know. And, two, their fire chief asked for their support of the opt-out vote and they support their firemen. I believe our fire chief also spoke to you asking the same, but I did not find that in the records of the Freedom of Information copies that I have. And I have to ask, do we support our firemen? I will be meeting with Ira and asking the same question as they also opted out. Emily Polly, Polling from The Voice, has told me that she will be publishing the letter that I also sent to all of you and that she is hoping to get the date of the meeting where it is voted on also and hoping to attend. I asked her to meet with some of you and some of the fire department, if possible, before that meeting so that all information is accurate. Our fire department has responded to calls when asked by the ambulance to assist on, lift assist, as the ambulance needed more strength to assist the individual. One story in terms of, is it working? An older couple's story that they shared with me. They called the, they called the 911. It was not a life-threatening emergency. They expected the fire company and it was the ambulance that showed up instead. They did not want transport. They did not feel it was necessary, but the ambulance staff said they should go and might need tests and things could be wrong. They became fearful and they spent six hours, they went and they spent six hours in the emergency room, not unusual for this day and age. When they were finally seen, they received, they were told there were no tests indicated necessary. They needed basic first aid and they were sent home. They received an ambulance bill for $3,000. I do not know if they or their insurance company paid that, but someone did. Had the fire department answered their call, there would have been no bill, as it would have been covered in the taxes paid. And yes, they signed the petition. I am still requesting to know the date when this vote will be taken so that I don't fall through the cracks.
All right. Thank you, Judy. Are you, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Just to be clear, what it is, there's a 911 protocol, which everyone on this board's familiar with, where this stemmed from the Chiefs Association on how to allocate resources and through med control, too, which governs us all. And where if there's a non, non-priority call, that, the, the new protocol says, we're not going to send both the fire department and the ambulance there. We're just going to, going to send the ambulance only unless it's going to be more than eight minutes' response time from the ambulance. If it's eight minutes or more, then the, the fire department would be dispatched also. Just for the, the fact that they, they don't want, they, they want to allocate our resources better, say if there's a second call, comes right after that, and the, the ambulance is, is responding to the first call, then our fire department would be able to respond to the second call that could be life-threatening. So that, that's the, the, the gist behind it. And as far as I know.
TriHospital is also stationed right next door.
Right next door.
So there's not a lack of response time like Algonac or Ira.
Right. And also, TriHospital is getting $250,000 of our taxpayer's money to do their job. So, you know, that's a fact.
Was that, is that before or after the, the recent millage pass?
No, af, after.
That's added, that's added 250.
Yeah.
It's an additional 250.
Yes, additional 250 that they receive from Clay Township.
Okay.
And they receive from the other.
Other, other communities, too.
But we've opted out in years past and a lot of people don't like dealing with TriCounty.
TriHospital.
Or TriHospital.
TriHospital. Well, we're not going to debate it now. I'm just.
And the chief did ask.
I'm just putting the, the facts out.
And to be clear, this does not need to be voted on every year.
Right. If, if someone on our board want, is going to change their mind, it was a split decision, then we can bring it back. But there's no sense to bring it back unless someone changes their mind on it. I just want to give a little bit of background to it. I think, I'm not sure, not maybe half the communities did vote, opt-out of it, where they send everybody on every call. We opted out on Harson's Island because we know the ambulance service would not be able to respond to Harson's Island within eight minutes or less. So, and we have a fire department's members stationed over there. So that made sense to opt-out over here. It has cut down the calls for the fire department, but it hasn't segregated the service that, you know, for a slip and fall accident either, as far as I can tell. So, so that's it. So, anyhow, moving on. Any other public comments? Hearing none. Moving right along to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a board meeting minutes of 3:00, 4:24, payroll reports, EFT payments, board approved in between meetings, and the notices of obligation to cut weeds and cemetery cleanup.
Support. A motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. Next on our new business, we have our annual appropriations. These are all budgeted. How it works is the state of Michigan allows us to spend or donate money to different groups. Like, I always use the example, everyone loves Little League, but Clay Township, as a government entity, cannot donate money to Algonac Little League. But they do allow us to donate money for library services, museums, and Council of Asia. So that's what we do every year. We put it in our budget. And that's what's next. And I will entertain a motion. We can group them all into one if you want.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the annual appropriations for $14,000, of which $5,000 for the library services, coming out of 101-790-965. $3,000 for the Algonac Clay Historical Society, coming out of 101-965-965.01. $3,000 for the Council of Beijing, coming out of 101-965-965.02. And $3,000 for the Harson's Island Historical Society, coming out of 101-965-965.05.
Support. A motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hiltonin.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. And to that, our museum is very special. I mean, you, you need to, if you've got an hour to kill, just walk through there. And if you've got some people out of town, call them up. I'll give you the contact information. They'll open it up and you will not be able to get your company out of there because it's way cool. So, and the same thing on the Harson's Island Museum. They do, both of them do a fantastic job. All right. Next, we have PCE's proposal for the Harson's Island wastewater treatment plant engineering. Before I use a package, now I've got John Monti here to ask any questions. This is pretty innovative and I'm sure we've, project and very complicated and detailed. And for the wastewater treatment plant itself, the engineering, and this is with inspections and all kinds of unforeseen things, is $440,000. And the collection system is $269,000, a total of $710,090. And, you know, of course, usually, my God, sticker shock, you know? And I, I agree, it's a lot of money, but for the whole, the, the whole project is really four and a quarter million dollars. And so percentage-wise, that's 16%, which, you know, is pretty good. Usually I've been checking out, usually this is, engineering inspections and everything is usually about 20% or more. So that's what, we'd like to get approved. And if you have any questions or anything, John's here and.
I have one question. I thought the LG Wheel owners were going to supply some of the engineering for that.
Yeah.
I don't know what part of that 410 they would have covered, but that was my under impression.
Of the plant. So go ahead.
Come on up.
Sure.
John Monti from PCE. Yes, there's a lot of information that's provided by LG Wheel directly. They have provided us with a proposal to furnish the equipment. They've been key in going through the plant discharge limits of what they can obtain, you know, which is the degree that you have to treat the water before it's discharged to the, to the river. So they're the key in the whole design of this thing, absolutely. There's no question about it. But they're on the side of where they're furnishing the technology and the equipment. And then what we have to do is we have to put the entire package together. So mechanically, it's like they drop the equipment off and then we've got to assemble, pipe it, put airlines in, electrical drain lines. There's multiple tanks that are involved with this. There's a little in the back here, I think there's a diagram of the plant itself that gives you kind of a concept idea of what it's going to look like, which there's some above-ground tanks, there's some below ground, some half in and out. The process is actually awesome. It is just great technology. It's green, low energy, you know? It's just one of those processes that you really can't go wrong with. It's ideal for Harson's Island, too, because Harson's Island experiences a lot of people in the summertime, obviously, and then it's not very many people in the winter. So this type of plant can deal with major fluctuations in flow rates, which is another huge advantage for this plant. We've spent a great deal of time on it already, actually putting the permit applications together. We're just about to submit the permit application on the site. We were kind of waiting for ownership of the site so that we could do that. We've met with Eagle. We've had multiple conversations with Eagle. It's been quite the, quite an interesting path. We've, I've contacted DTE for power. We've done a lot of the preliminaries to figure out what needs to be done with this site. I've spent a great deal of time on the collection system as well. So phase one of this is a collection system that will be basically the downtown San Souci area, going from Bar Harbor along South Channel, from Bar Harbor, about where Tajmo Marina is, slightly past that, to La Croix, and then up all of the streets that border those. That's phase one. So we've looked at how we'd construct the, the system, whether it be a gravity system or a pressurized sewer collection system due to the constraints that we have on the island. For example, you know, high water conditions, wet ground to deal with, limited work within the road right-of-way, limited area, and, and then getting materials. So, you know, when you dig, dig a deep hole for a sanitary sewer, for example, down the middle of the street, you have to backfill that with dry sand. And then you need aggregate base and you need to rebuild the road. So there's a lot that's involved in all of the details of this. That's, anyway, that's phase one of the collection system, but we're also looking at what it would take to go out and expand the collection system further in each direction. On a preliminary basis, we're looking at going from, from the church, from the church back to North Channel, I guess. So all along South Channel and then, not all of South Channel, but from the church along South Channel Drive back to the North Channel and those finger streets that are involved with that.
Which church, St. Paul's or St. Mark's?
St. Mark's.
St. Mark's.
To St. Paul's is at the other end. So, yeah, it would go all the way through to that, actually. Kind of to where the old boys' club was, you know, we'd get out to the channel there.
We expanded the area quite a bit from what we initially proposed.
Part of this, though, is, and this is still in process. I mean, it's not, all of it's not set in stone just yet, but we have to pre-plan in advance for what we need in the collection system to make sure it's suitable, obviously, to handle it. We don't want to do phase one and figure out, we should have put a bigger pipe in, you know, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of work that goes, that's involved with that. The Water Department has been great, by the way, providing data on water consumption and other things and breaking that down for us by the customers that are in the area. And we've done a lot of work with LG Wheel, which is, One Water is actually the name of the company that, that does this. They've been fabulous to deal with in this whole process of putting this package together. So it's quite complicated. When you talk about the percentages, Artie, that it's, you'll find in this, the percentages are a little bit higher for the wastewater plant, but then they're lower for the collection system, that because the plant is much more complicated. We have, we have teamed with some other, with an architect and with mechanical and electrical specialists that LG Wheel has worked with in the past. So we're putting that whole package in the team together. So all of this is, is really start to finish from the design, bidding, contract administration, inspection, testing, construction layout, all the components to get it to handing over the key when it's all done. So.
So, John, you're going to be acting as the project manager as well for the contract?
I am handling this project in its entirety, but as. But as far as, we're not construction managers, so we probably, we won't be doing that part, if that's what you're thinking, Mark. But yeah, we'll be handling, we'll be coordinating all of the work through the whole thing.
So is it for Phase One and for Phase Two? Like, I see 70, 75,000 in staking, I guess, seems like a lot. But if you're doing Phase Two also, I guess I could...
No. This, this, the numbers that you have are only for Phase One.
So 76,000 for staking, just for that one little area? Seems like a lot.
There's construction inspection.
I mean, I'm just looking at the construction staking allowance, 26,000 for the plant and 50,000.
Right. So...
And you're not even putting the stakes in, you're just saying where they go?
No, no, we put the stakes in the ground, definitely. And it is, and it is for Phase One. But what we've done is we've broke it down because we do a ton of construction layout for contractors right now. We know exactly what they're asking for. They want us to stake the foundations. They want us to stake soil erosion, every component, pump stations, footings, pinning footings, anchor bolts, just about all the components of the plant. Inside the plant, we're not really doing anything. It's most, all the exterior stuff and the foundations and that kind of thing. When it gets to the collection system, you know, we're putting a stake every 100 feet, for example, all the way along the, the length with grades on it, all the locations of the valves. And in this case, it gets a little more complicated because we're actually doing all the services to, to all the homes. So there's a lot of work dealing with this, with the services. If we do a pressurized system, pumps will be put in at every single resident and they'll pump into the system. It's a little different than your normal gravity system. But it's, then again, it's easier to build because it's shallow. It's like putting a water line in, for example. It's a shallow, pressurized system. So we're still actually evaluating all the components of that to make sure that the prices will come in where we need them to. But we've already spent a great deal of time actually investigating it. But the Phase Two, the only things we're doing with Phase Two is accounting for Phase Two. Like the treatment plant itself, we've set aside enough area to construct a duplicate facility. So Phase One is 25,000 gallons per day. Phase Two would be another, like basically a duplication. We're stubbing utilities and designing the pumps and some of the things that'll handle both phases, you know, in the event that the next phase takes place. And then with the collection system, we're doing a similar thing, just from the standpoint of making sure that our mainline pipes leading to the plant are large enough to accommodate where we might extend in the future. So that takes some pre-planning as well. But we're not going to be staking Phase Two or anything like that. It'll just be considered in the design process.
It seems like if Phase One is that one area for 25,000, I don't know if we could go, do that huge distance for another 25,000. It seems like we'd need more.
Yeah, probably not, no. We, we also don't know the exact, right now, what I've done is I've, I've picked an arbitrary extension going each way to the, like to the churches each direction, right?
25,000, never do it.
We don't know how far, I, I don't have an exact thing on what would be your Phase Two. Actually, in my drawing, I don't know if I attached it here.
Yeah, I see a Phase Two in here.
It actually shows Phase Two, Three, Four, and Five.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the way I label them, doing them in sections because it's somewhat unlikely you'd do it all at once, but it could happen.
Yeah, how much the money, how the money goes.
Exactly. And, and in designing this, we need to take it into pieces of showing how much we're going to add as we go along, so.
Hey, John, is it too early to ask for a timeline on this?
A little bit.
Okay, I don't want to put any more pressure on you than you have already.
Well, you know, we wanted to dive into the design of this plant as soon as possible. The permits, we've been heavy on the permits. We've had stumbling blocks with Eagle on the wetland mitigation. That's been our, that's been a big deal. We don't have that tied down to this day. We know what we can do in the end ultimately, but we don't have a final plan. So permitting takes some time, so it's, this won't be built this summer, you know? More than likely, it'll be, by the time we get through all the process here, it'll be starting towards next summer.
And you think we'll have enough money for construction and materials?
Yeah.
Like 20% on engineering would be good?
That's the plan.
Okay, great. So the plans are for one plant, with potentially building a second one right next door to it, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So how many of these phases is that first plant going to be able to handle?
The first plant handled, this phase is designed only for Phase One, and that's 25,000 gallons per day. But we're, we're anticipating, really, it'll go a little farther based on the water usage. This was always the original intended Phase One. I only extended it slightly. But, but based on the water consumption records that were, we, actually, I just received some this past week for some of the other areas, it looks like we may be able to even go further. The, this Phase One plant will handle more people, is what I'm saying. So...
Potentially, we can go all the way by where the North Channel is, by the boys' club, all the way down to the Catholic Church, which is a lot more than we initially anticipated. And that would be huge, wouldn't you agree with that, John?
So that would include Phase One through Five then, correct?
Well, right. What I labeled One through Five in here, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, we would need more property.
Phase One, though, is all we're building, we're proposing to build currently, is Phase One of the collection system and Phase One of the treatment plant. So it would be the first treatment plant building. If you look on the little site plan, it shows a dotted line for the second building that could fit next to it. We wanted to make sure we did have some growth potential on the site. And, and it does allow us to do that. In fact, we've also found that I've been able to refine this building down a little bit. It won't be quite as large as it is shown on this drawing, but it's pretty close.
Three, Four, and Five would be on different property, not the same property.
Um, phases Three, Four, and Five has enough, is, is only the collection system. It's the pipes leading to the plant.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, and to answer your question, Maureen, let me just find it. Phase One entails 2,340 feet of pipe, 90 services. I'm not sure how many manholes. That's a lot of staking. There's, there's a lot to it.
There's actually, John, I want to say there's 7,000 feet of pipe.
Just for Phase One?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the little...
Because I've got to go to Tajmo.
Map here. Okay, so you're, so you're saying on your picture, if you total all those up, that's the total footage?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's even more, that's a lot more.
Right.
So there's a lot to it.
I guess where the confusion is, you have Phase One and Two for the plants, and then you have Phase One through Five for the collection system.
Right, yes.
I apologize, just the way I labeled it, the plant site, two phases, is all we can fit on that. And the collection system, we always intended to do Phase One. Phase Two was, well, how much further can we go? I'm saying I want to see it go a lot further, so I want to account for that now if I can. So that's why I'm kind of trying to pre-design that in if we can, to see what'll, what we can take.
Great.
Gotcha.
And in a nutshell, just for people, they don't have the slightest idea what we're talking about. Harson's Island, we, there's a problem with septic fields and getting new permits. And downtown San Souci is pretty much stagnant and shut down because they're not allowing any more septic fields or expansion. Like, for instance, the San Souci bar, they got pumping-haul everything that they took, take. So we went to work first, we were going to do a big septic field for the whole town. That got shot down. And went to work and we found this really incredible idea, I think. And it uses algae to treat the water. And this is going to be the first algae plant in the, in the state. There's like four or five of them in the country. And then what it does, it takes, you know, the algae, it treats the water. And then we take the algae when we're done with it and we actually sell it and it gets converted into ink or rubber foam, like for tennis shoes. They use that. And then we were even taking it a step further because it really uses not much power, energy, to create this. And we've, we've applying for, it's going, we're going to be carbon neutral, in fact. We're going to create carbon credits, it's called. And we did this study where it's estimated it's going to create 168 tons of carbon credits a year.
Artie, you're kind of getting in the weeds here.
Okay, I only have 30 more seconds. And we, we'll take that and we're going to sell those on the open market to help offset the cost of running the plant. And so it's going to be the first one in the country wastewater treatment plant to capture carbon credits. So we're, we're on cutting edge on this stuff, so, yeah. It's, I give PCE and John a lot of credit for, for doing this. It's a...
It's cool stuff.
It's cool stuff.
So this $710,000 is not a Phase One, Phase Two? This is all for Phase One, for the plant and the collection system?
Correct.
Okay.
As far as the design for the mechanical, John, the electrical, the plumbing from IMEG, that's all engineering costs?
It is.
There's no physical...
No installation.
Construction going on with this.
No installation.
This is, this is all design and engineering.
Yep.
And it's coming out of the $2 million grant, though.
So the $2 million grant that we had, was this $710,000 figured into that $2 million grant?
First part of it was.
The first part of it was, right.
What first part?
And, and that $2 million was just the first grant that you were applying for, that you received. So I believe you, you applied for another two and a quarter million.
Two and a quarter mil.
Right. But this first grant was supposed to put in the plant and serve downtown San Souci originally. So, and that's what we're doing right now, is putting in the plant for downtown San Souci, correct?
Right.
So that's what the $2 million is for, is this $710,000 figured into that $2 million grant?
Not the whole thing, no.
The, the plant, too, the, the, the overall cost was like roughly $4 million.
For the whole project.
For the whole project.
Phase One?
Just what we're talking about, for the plant and the collection system.
On Phase One.
For the design work that this covers is a $4 million project.
Yeah, they said that from the beginning, it's going to be $4 million. We get the $2 million, hope we get the other two.
And if we don't?
We will.
So what is the, what is the LG Wheel one from us? What's their initial stroke?
Originally, it was what, 1.8?
I think it's somewhere in that range. 1.4, we've modified some of the equipment a little bit of what we're doing. Somewhere in that range, yeah, of equipment costs.
Right. It's around 1.4, 1.5, and then the rest of it is hooking up, the pipe goes through San Souci.
And we have an estimated, a projected cost on that?
Of what?
The rest of the pipe work.
For San Souci?
It was estimate, originally, the estimates were around $2 million for the collection system and $2 million for the plant, roughly.
And then included engineering.
Plus your 710, John?
Yeah.
So now we're looking at a four-point...
All the engineering and everything was included in the original numbers.
So now we're looking at roughly a $4.7 million project.
No, he said the engineering's included in the formula.
Okay. So at the end of the day, our total cost is roughly around over $4 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
We don't have hard costs yet because we haven't gone out to bid.
That's why Artie's trying to get 2.25.
The, the final design isn't there yet. So those are the things we're refining with the collection system itself and even the plant. All of the numbers that we received on a preliminary basis were like guessing at, well, what are our permit limits going to tell us we have to do? You know, will we have to add something to the treatment process because of the way the limits come in? So that helps to control the cost of what degree do you have to treat the water? So we're still working on that. We're working on the permit application that will tell us what we have to do leading to the river. So we've made estimates on what we think we're going to do unless Eagle has some changes that they want us to do. So a lot of it at this stage is somewhat preliminary.
So is Eagle aware of some of the changes that may come because they're...
They're well aware of everything. We've been in full contact with them continuously. Eagle's the one that also issues the permit. It's just called a different permit name. But I mean, they're the ones that actually issue the permit on our discharge requirements. Another division works on the wetlands in Flood Plain. So we're working with both of those groups.
So is this $710,000 all that we should expect to see from PCE for this project? Or is there going to be other things coming that we need to approve for this project that you need to do?
I can't think of anything that you would be getting additional from PCE for this. I've tried to include all the costs and things even like all the way down to the testing, the soil borings, the construction layout, the inspection, every portion that is typically done in a project like this, I've tried to cover it completely. The only thing, and I put in here that we're not, that we were not doing was, well, there's a couple exclusions in here. Like, we're not anticipating any hazardous materials anywhere. We, we wouldn't know if you would encounter anything like that or not anyway. This is kind of a typical thing. We, at this point, we are not applying for any carbon credits in this, in this work. That's something that's done after you've completed the project, really, anyway. I honestly, Cindy, can't think of anything that we would be coming back to you to ask you for additional money on.
Okay.
Tried to be very thorough.
Do you know how much is in our, this is line 597-807. It should be less than $2 million because I know that we've incurred some costs already, but it's close to $2, right? Is it like $1,990,000 we got, or?
Should have called this afternoon, we could have told you.
Okay. Well, we'll can look at that later. But, I mean, it's, we got to have pretty much all of the $2 million still. All right.
What's our contingency plan if we don't get the extra 2.25?
We'll have a plant and we'll have San Souci hooked up to it. Let me put it this way, I can't imagine us not getting it any, any way that's going to happen.
I think the second grant determines how far the collection system goes.
Right.
Well, we're, we're still going to be behind the eight ball a little bit on this project because 1.4 and 710,000 don't come out to $2 million.
710 is for the whole thing.
Which is what, no, this is for, this is what we're doing.
Right.
Not the whole thing, just Phase One.
And the 1.4 is just the materials, not the, not the labor. So, yeah, I mean, we need the other 2.25.
But you figure, you calculated some of the Phase Two in the 710, right?
Right, it's Phase One and Phase Two.
No, he's just, he's just...
Is the collection syst, yeah. John, I want to hear from you.
Right, one, one is the plant, like, when we talk about the 1.4 for the plant roughly, then you'd have in engineering fees, another 440,000 that's...
For the plant.
For the plant portion of it.
Correct.
Then for the collection system, we had, we have 270,000. And the balance of that would be for, of the $2 million earmarked kind of for the collection system, the balance would be to install the collection system for that. So, yeah, what we would do, I suppose, there, I mean, there's a couple of options we can do, is we can scale back the collection system. We won't be able to scale the plant back much. There may be some things that we could do without that we're planning for, for the next phase, that we're upsizing or that kind of thing. next phase, that we're upsizing or that kind of thing. So there may be some things that we could scale back if we needed to for that. The collection system, again, right now, it includes 100% of service hookups right to the house. You know, there may end, I mean, if push came to shove, you could say homeowner, it's your responsibility to pay to hook it up to the street. But right now, the costs are included to actually hook everything up. So oftentimes when a collection system is put in, the main line goes down the street and then people pay as they?
There's tap in fees.
Tap in, so. So there's ways to do some scaling. Certainly not much with the plant though.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear of what we're paying for, what we have money for, you know, and how far we're going to get with this, that's all.
That makes sense. It's a lot of money.
My understanding, the only thing that's included as far as phase two is like to make the pipes big enough to cover phase two. That's the only thing that's included in this, right?
Basically.
It's all.
Pre-planning for phase, yeah, for extensions and the future.
Just, just to make sure it can handle the flow, that we have the big enough pipes coming, and that's the only thing as far as phase two, I think. Right?
Right.
Okay.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Then we can talk about it.
Well, I'm ready to shock everyone. Make a motion to approve the Harson Island wastewater treatment plant engineering for $710,090 out of line, item 597-807.
Do we have a second? Support? We have support. Okay, do we have any more discussion? Questions, concerns? Before we call vote?
Well, it seems like we're sticking our neck out a little bit, right? But there's some risks, some lots of reward. There's a giant upside to it.
Yep.
Not the first time we've stuck our neck out.
No, it's not. It's not, but as a board, we have an obligation to discuss it. Discuss the shortcomings, discuss potentially not receiving a secondary grant.
We don't get it, we do the plant in San Souci and call it a day? And, I mean.
But then understanding that we've overpaid for engineering?
Well, for phase one, but we wouldn't be paying that other $270,000 for the collection system. So the bill wouldn't be $700,000.
Oh, that's not my understanding at all.
That's the collection system for phase one, for that plant, for downtown.
Yes.
That's what he just said.
We can't get San Souci done for what we'll have. We won't have enough money. So, I mean, it's, we don't have a match in it, so, you know, it's all grant money. We would be, it would be disappointing to waste taxpayers, you know, $2 million, but...
Well, and that's when you end up with a debt service, correct?
Right.
Man, it's got to go somewhere. You can't just pretend it's not there, the bill. It's got to get paid.
I mean, if we didn't get the grant, we just keep trying until we did, I guess, or get smaller ones and maybe it'll take longer. I don't know, it's all we could do.
I've been talking to the EPA about getting funding and, and other, other branches too. But like I said, I, I have two senators and a congresswoman are all asking me, hey, I want to be in on this and for the next go around for earmarks.
Well, that was before we were rebuilding a bridge over in Baltimore. That was before the government wanted to rebuild a bridge in Baltimore.
Yeah, well.
So our two main fixed costs, right, just, just to paint with a really broad brush, we're at $1.4 million for the ALGIL plant, right? And we're 710 for PCE. So that brings it to what, 2.110?
Right.
Right, so we're $110,000 potentially in the hole on this if we don't get?
If we don't get.
Anything else.
But that's just materials, right? It's not labor. So that's just for the stuff. You just got to install the pipe, you got to build the building, you got to pay people to do it.
There is more involved to it than just that, than that simply of put. Some of this stuff too, remember, I'm taking this all the way through to the very end. So let's just take an example that the, we can't go as far with the collection system. It might be pre-designed, we might pre-design, we'll have it pre-designed, but let's say all we can do is the main road and we can't do some of the finger streets because we don't have enough money. Well, then I'm not doing as much layout anymore. I'm not doing the testing anymore or the inspection on that. So these are all the estimated costs to do all of it. A lot of this, you're not going to see until we're well into the construction, right? But I'm trying to foresee the whole project. So if there's some scaling back, it'll be scaling back on our side as well.
So we're going to pay as we play with you and not giving you the whole $70,000 upfront?
Yeah, we, no, geez, I'd like a check. No, no, this is billed like we do with everything else on a monthly basis for work that's completed. So.
Any other questions? Roll call?
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes.
Hey, motion passes. I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Okay, it is a big undertaking. Okay, next we have for fire department, new hire for someone part-time, Evan Chief. Sorry, I sit through a designing a wastewater treatment plant that's never been done here in the state.
Yeah. Good evening. I'm requesting permission from the Clay Township Board to hire one new part-time firefighter, Evan Ronald Sequin. He's certified firefighter one, firefighter two, state of Michigan. He has also attended a EMT class with Wayne County Community College Public Safety. He's also waiting to take his test on that. Evans lives on Blue Bell. He's one of our residents from township. He attended and graduated Algonac High School. We've interviewed him and he's passed his background.
Awesome. Evan, you know how to swim? You got to ask everybody that.
Yes, sir. I also have my basic water rescue certificate too.
Oh, okay. Well, good for you. And I, I won't hold it against you, I know you're a dad.
Okay.
So. Does anyone have any questions for Evan?
I love the fact that Evan is local.
Yes, sure.
It's a huge feather in your cap, young man.
Yes, sir.
I happened to coach Evan when he was younger and I think he'd make a great firefighter. Really happy to have him part of our team.
You want to make the motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the new hire part-time, Evan Sequin, firefighter one, firefighter two.
Support? Yeah, motion of support.
Who's supported that? Mark?
Yeah.
Evan, what days are you available to work?
Seven days a week if I could.
All right.
I can work anytime.
Good to hear.
Good, good, good. All right, well, any other? Anything? I'm glad that he's local, that's important and...
Yeah, have you currently been working with the fire department?
I went through Detroit's Fire Academy and I, due to EMT attempts, they, I got basically, they just let go a lot of people, so still working on that, but I'm going to get it.
Well, we want you to be successful.
Yes, sir.
So if you need anything or anything, don't be afraid to reach out, okay, Evan?
Will do.
All right. All in favor of hiring Evans' part-time fire department signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next we have new hire for Patrick. I'm not even going to try it, Patrick.
Jay Zinski.
Jay Zinski, okay. Okay.
I'm requesting permission from the Clay Township Board to hire a part-time firefighter, Patrick Ryan.
Jay Zinski.
Jay Zinski. He's currently employed with Tri-Hospital EMS as an ambulance, on the ambulance, as a emergency medical technician. He's currently certified EMT with state of Michigan. He's also working part-time for Marine City Fire Department. And he's presently enrolled in a firefighter one, firefighter two class here at St. Clair County, so he'll be graduating at the end of April. We've interviewed him, he's passed that, and he's also passed his interview or his background.
Patrick, do you know how to swim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel better. Any other questions? You got to ask them, how many, how many days a week can you work?
Patrick, how many days a week can you work?
As many as I can.
Good answer.
Where do you live, Patrick?
I live downtown Marine City.
Okay. How long have you been in the fire service?
Uh, coming up a year now and a week.
And you still love it?
He's here.
Okay.
All right, someone want to make a motion?
Wait a minute, we anticipate completing firefighter one and firefighter two by the end of this April?
Uh, I think May, it's mid-May.
Yeah, mid-May.
Mid-May?
Yep.
One and two?
Yeah.
Can you take those as combined class, Chief?
What's that?
You take those together as a combined class?
It's a combined class. Our, we have one of our, our firefighters in the same class with him. Gotcha.
Yeah, they combined them both.
Yep.
How long have you been with Tri, Patrick?
Um, it'll be a year in June.
Do we have a motion yet?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to hire Patrick Jagodowski, EMT, Clay Township Fire Department.
Second?
We have support?
Jay Zinski.
See the nickname Jag coming?
I'm going to call him Patrick J. Yeah, Patrick J. All right, any more discussion?
So they don't start until they pass, right? It says pending?
No, his credentials are pending, but he can, he's an EMT, so he can start.
Yeah, he can start.
He has a DMT.
Okay. Evans firefighter one and two, his, his pending is just the EMT. Got you.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Patrick?
Thank you.
Thank you. And likewise, we want you to succeed. So if you need anything, let us know.
I will.
All right, next on our agenda is badge and name tags for our fire department. Go ahead, Chief.
Yes, good evening. I'm requesting permission from the Board of Trustees to purchase 35 badges and 35 name plates from Walter F. Stevens Company. They're located in Ohio. We have a bargaining agreement with the union to purchase badges and name tags, and this meets that agreement with the union. And that would be a badge and name tag for each employee. For the 35 bags, badges and name tags would be $6,828. And I would like the funds to come out of the clothing allowance, which would be line item 206-0074100.
Okay.
Is that a new design on that fire department badge?
That's, no, it's not. That badge was designed about 40 years ago when the fire department first formed. The Stevens Company has the mold for that badge, and I would like to kind of keep that tradition to go on.
So no way, so we're, basically we got to use them for this?
For this badge, yes.
Specific badge?
Yes.
Does it say Clay Township at the top or not?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
That's a little bit dark.
Chief, do they have badges now?
No, they don't.
What was that again?
I asked if they had badges now.
No.
So the collective bargaining agreement with MAF on July 1st, 2021?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're three years later, we're coming around to the idea that we got to get them badges, which is cool. I love the idea. Love it. So doing a quick Google search, right? I came up with the first 25 badges and I could not get one for $180.
Okay.
They were between 20 bucks and 140 bucks on the upper end. I could not find one for 180. Do you have any other quotes?
No, I don't.
Did you solicit any or this is who you wanted to go with? Help me get there.
I, I researched, I had to research this company because I couldn't find where they got the original design from. That's how I got this company.
So who, like? Is it nostalgic? Are we trying to match up to some of our firefighters who already have these? Like, why are we stuck with this design?
It's a design that was when the fire department first formed. There's a mold that this company has for this badge. Nobody else has this, so it would cost another 3,000 or, or 2,500 to $3,000 to have a mold made of that badge if I have another company to design that badge, if they could do that.
Do they have any other molds?
So, I guess what we need to decide as a board is do we want this original badge? Is that important to us? Or do we want Chief to get quotes on a different line of badges for the department? He's trying to go with the badge that the department originally had, which as you can tell is quite a bit more expensive. So as a board, we would have to decide whether we want to stick with that badge that the department's always had or ask the chief to get some other quotes.
Or do we know if another company could even do it for a better price?
Perhaps.
I'm willing to table it until next board meeting.
I would like to see some additional quotes.
I will call Smith &amp; Wesson. They make badges too.
Who does?
Smith &amp; Wesson.
I'm partial to the traditional badge of the pike and pole and the hydrant in it. You know what I mean?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said I'm more in tuned with the traditional badge with the pike and the pole and the hydrant. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I used to have one on my ring, but.
Should we go ahead and order the, the name tags?
I can order the name tags.
But do we know where that, if that's a good price or not?
Well, seventeen.
Well, they're only 17 bucks.
17 bucks.
Right?
I, I say let, let, let's at least get the name tags.
Yeah, and is this, you think this is just a lousy picture?
Yeah, but.
I have an, I have one of the original badges on my desk.
Is it attractive?
Pardon?
Is it attractive? Is it a good-looking badge?
Yes, it is.
This is a really lousy picture.
Yeah.
The things that we're looking at, it doesn't do it justice, I'm afraid. You can't even see clay. Like I had to zoom it in like to 200% to see there is a little clay township in there.
Clay township down there, yeah?
What's it say at the top?
Well, I guess.
It says firefighter at the top.
My only concern with the name tags, Chief, is that, you know, as we bring on next week, perhaps two more people, two more people, with the turnaround time is to get these name tags so that everyone has the same name tags, right?
Right.
So if you think that you can reasonably get these from this company in a reasonable amount of time as we add people to the department, you know, but then you're consistently going back to this company for these name badges, I'm going to assume, correct?
Right.
So do you want the board to approve the name badges if perchance we're going to go somewhere else for a badge or?
I mean, I could check for both of them and bring it back to.
I'm just, I'm just asking your opinion as far as getting these from a company in Ohio.
I honestly believe that it depends on the finish. If you get a glossy finish or a satin finish, I think they're both probably going to be the same.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I really do. I don't want to get off like too far off. It's not that much money. I don't want to get off like too far off, it's not that much money.
Yeah, right there.
Yep. But I think it's a spectacular idea.
Well, we agreed to do it.
What's that?
We agreed to do it in the CVA and we're going back in a couple weeks, talking again, they're going to say, hey.
I, I understand, but we agreed to do it in 21.
Yep.
Okay, so there's not, like, let's not act like this is a big pressure item all of a sudden.
No.
Because it's not, we've been sitting on it for a long time.
So chief, you want, you want orders and name plates from this company or hold off until we have?
I can order name plates from this company and then I will get some other quotes for.
Are the designs going to be the same for the firefighters as well as the officers?
The officers would be probably a different color, would be a gold.
Someone want to make a motion that we do the name tags?
Yeah, I will. I'll make a motion to approve the third portion of the quote from Walter F. Stevens for the J5 name bar polished CV, the amount of 700, I'm sorry, $528. Will there be any tax, are we exempt from that?
Exempt, there'll be 30 badges, 17, 16.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Just not meaning?
Yep, cool.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, next, we're hiring a lot of people, that's good. New full-time hire for patrol, Anthony Ales?
Ales.
Ales?
Anthony Ales, Anthony likes to go by Tony. Anthony lives bordering us over here, Columbus Township. You probably, some of you probably know his dad owns Ultimate Contracting here in Clay Township, has been here for a long time.
And we won't hold that against you either.
No, your dad's got a pretty good reputation in this community.
Yeah.
And so right now, Tony is working up for the village of Lexington, he's been there for approximately two and a half years. We have conducted a thorough background investigation and he comes very, very highly recommended. They do not want to see him go from up there, but they know that it's time to spread his wings. He's assured me that he plants roots here, that's it, he's done. Nothing but good things said about Tony. Really glad to be bringing him aboard and I think he's going to make a great addition to our department.
So Tony, you live in the area?
Currently, I live up next, close to Port Huron up there in Clay Township, but I'd be looking to move down this way, yes.
Port Huron isn't that far.
No.
I drive it through all the time.
Yep. I'm sorry, chief, you say you're currently with Lexington?
Correct.
And for how long?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years?
What's the square miles of Lexington?
One.
Yeah, and he said sometimes it was trying and you only see your car for hours.
Tony, you know how to swim?
I do.
All right. That's a good thing.
Then he'd start the field training program, how long is that for, starting tomorrow?
Generally about three months, depending on how things go along, he does have experience. So as our FTOs go through it, if we see that we can accelerate them in areas, we will do such. If we think we need a little work in some other areas, we'll work on that, but it kind of evens itself out, but usually around three months.
Tony, working with Officer Burley?
I'll be working with a few different FTOs, three different phases of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Clay Township Police Department new hire, full-time patrol, Anthony Ales.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, congratulations, Tony.
Congratulations.
Thanks for being, coming on and.
Come to Clay PD.
Yep, so. All right. All right, cool. On to the next. Okay, next up.
Painless.
New hire dispatcher, Melinda Ho, is that right?
And Melinda likes to go by Mindy.
Mindy, thank you.
Another fantastic hire we've got coming here, Mindy has been with Lakeside Mall Security and dispatcher there for over 20 years. Another one comes very highly recommended and it's crushing them to lose her, but their loss is going to be our gain. She does live here in Clay Township, part of our community, which is even a bigger plus. Comes very highly recommended and once again, just nothing but good things to say about Mindy and I think we're going to be very lucky to have her coming aboard. She, and it's nice, we should be able to get her nice and trained up before the summer months start hitting where we really need that position filled, so.
It's like what Christmas was like.
Did we lose someone that we need to replace?
We, yeah, quite a while back.
Okay.
And we just have not been able to replace.
Okay.
So Mindy, how does your job at Lakeside compare with dispatchers in the police department?
I don't know yet, well, no, there's going to be a lot more to it, I mean, you know, obviously there's going to be the fire involved and, you know, a lot more, a lot more to it. But I've been doing it for a long time and just going to have a lot more, yeah, that's the only way I know how to explain it right now. Because I haven't started yet, so I haven't learned a little bit tonight, but.
I believe you've got to live for the job, so it's no problem. Were you working 12-hour shifts there?
No, no, at Lakeside I was only working eight, but I've been coming here for 12.
All right.
It's a good time to get out of there, that place is.
I was about to say, who's going to ask me what's going on, right?
It's really.
Mall walkers every day.
It's just depressing.
Rough crowd there.
Yeah, yeah. There's only maybe 30 stores, 40 at most open and about the next six months it'll probably be down to about 20.
Gosh, it's a shame.
Yeah.
You're a kid back in the early 80s, I mean, that was the place to be.
That was the place, the hang.
Yeah.
It was the place.
I was mall walking, probably saw me on camera.
Yeah.
I mean, I started back in 2000, 2001, so it was happening when I started.
Yeah, and it's a shame.
Seeing so much of that now.
Mindy, do you know how to swim? Because you do a lot of swimming in dispatch.
I'm on flamingo, so.
All right.
Do you like your job?
Oh, I love my job.
You're good under pressure?
I hope so. So far, so good.
We'll find out.
You're right here in Clay?
Yeah, I'm on flamingo.
Okay.
I'm on flamingo, yeah.
Great.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for the police new hire full-time dispatcher, Melinda Ho and Mindy.
Support.
Motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have, we ordered them, when did we order these, Lance? We have some meter yokes that came in.
August of last year.
August of last year.
And they just finally come in.
So we need to approve the purchase for 7488 for the meter yokes.
Make a motion to approve the meter yokes in the amount of $7,488 for line 591, 746.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion?
Lance, you don't want to upsell us on this or give us the route?
I'm just.
Tell us all about meter yokes?
The worst part is, is the second, the second batch, when I order them, they told me 26 to 30 weeks.
Okay. Yeah.
And I robbed from Peter and paid Paul, so I got this order in. I paid Paul back. Paul said is that if they don't use them, I can use them again, so we'll see what happens.
All right. It's craziness.
Is it a roll call?
Okay, we have motion of support, right?
We do.
Any more discussion?
I'm just trying to add it up, 3744 and 3855, doesn't seem right.
And actually, I got another quote today, I might be able to get them cheaper.
Okay.
For the second batch.
So when this meter yoke, is that like a outside screw yoke?
It actually sits in the meter pits out front and it's a horn that comes up and then the meter sits inside of that, in the meter pits. We actually build the rest of the pit, or the rest of the setter on that, we build at the shop with copper and everything else.
And they, it adds up to 7599, not 7488. You thinking it can be less?
Looks like your quote in March, your most recent quote, they went up from 312 to 32125.
Yep.
No, that's for the next ones, isn't it? Because you got to add these two together, because his.
7599.
He actually said that he'll match the last one, so I will double check on that.
Okay, so both of them should be 312?
Yes.
Should be 3744 twice. So that's 88, that's, that's your 7488.
Right.
So I don't know, do you?
But I actually have it, it'll be cheaper through corn, I mean, they actually come in at 281 each, so.
Then we're good.
Should we just make the motion not to exceed?
Yep.
7488, okay. I'll make a motion to purchase the DPW meter yokes.
We already have a motion.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yep. All right, we have motion and support for 78, 7488, not to exceed.
You have to like amend it to not to exceed or no?
Nah.
All in favor?
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? No, we got to do, no, we don't. All in favor, or.
It's time to go.
Oh, yes.
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next board member comments. Cindy, you got anything down there?
I do not have anything down here.
Okay, how about you, Mark?
Yeah, the planning commission, we had a meeting with the person that wants to build a storage pole barn over on Mill Street in residential property, he wants it spot-zoned and commercial. And although it's been denied by the ZBA and denied by the court, they came back with a spot request and that has been post-pound pending attorney intervention, so I can say about that. Congratulations to the new hires, very much.
Thank you.
Maureen?
Just congratulations Evan and Patrick and Tony and Mindy, glad to have you.
John?
Yep. Welcome aboard to the new hires.
Yeah. Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I've got this Blue Water Conservation District forum and it's a, it's a tree, shrub, conifers, plants. It, the county, they do it in co-op with the county every year. And, you know, if you want a tree or any, you want to spruce up your landscaping, it's absolutely an outstanding thing to, to look into because it's cheaper than farming fleet, it's cheaper than tractor supply and it, and it's quality product. The real problem is, the meeting's on a Tuesday, so our orders are due on Thursday, no, Friday the 5th of this week. So it don't give you much time, give you about 72 hours to consider it. The link is bluwaterconservationdistrict.com. You can find their order forms on there. Again, if, if you're interested in sprucing up your landscaping, it's a great resource.
How big are the trees?
It varies. It varies. Some, most of them are saplings, some 12 to 24 inches. But they're cheap, you know, 10 bucks, 15 bucks, 20 bucks, fruit trees, apple trees, pear trees, peach trees, firs, douglas, kind of, you know, all that stuff. It's great, it's a great resource if you're into it.
And we're probably going to get some more trees to give away in May.
That'd be great.
And that was, what were they, Lance, oak trees, red oak, white oak?
He gets different ones every year.
Maple, yeah, we get different ones, maple trees.
He gets different ones every year though.
How big are those?
Uh, they're probably about that.
Yeah, they're.
Two, three footers.
Yeah, a couple three feet ceilings, so.